Please call and roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Delling.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks. Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right, item number four, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items that concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action of the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting July 20, in July 2023. Item B, approval of the minutes of the emergency meeting. I need those dates, guys.
Seventeenth.
The regular was the seventeenth.
And the 25th was the emergency meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of claims in the amount of $310,512.68 and payroll expenses of $236,674.22. Item D, approval of OGN E expense of $27,876.82. Item E, approval of Tyler Technologies' expense of $46,802.14.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and second from Mrs. Bear to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call and vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. I don't believe we have a planning commission report, do we? Hospital authority meeting, Mr. Bowman.
I have nothing to report as I was out of state during this news.
Item C is a library board meeting. I know Mr. Delling would normally report on that. Steve, do you have anything to share?
I wouldn't have anything to share personally.
Okay. Arena authority meeting. I don't have a report to share there. Tourism tax commission.
We did not have a meeting, there was no request.
Okay. Look at us go. I don't believe there was a board of adjustments meeting.
No.
Airport commission meeting, we had a pretty routine meeting. I don't think we had anything on that agenda either. It was just reports. The recreation complex, Gail.
We opened the bids for the turf project on the 11th of August and then sent them, there were four companies that bid. We sent them to Kenley Horn to help us decide whether or not they had completed the bid specs. And then we met on the 17th. All of the bids were over our budget limit and so we tabled it and we're going to meet again on Wednesday to decide just exactly what we're going to do, most likely when to start all over.
Any questions for Gail? Thank you. Next item is a museum cemetery meeting. We didn't have one of those either, did we? Okay. Mr. Winters, finance committee meeting.
All right, so our cash accounts are sitting here at just shy of $4 million and investments are about three and a half million. We collected about five and a quarter percent of budgeted revenues for the overall and expended 5.41%, so expended just slightly more than what was brought in as far as budget goes. The general funds, pretty close to on target, collecting just under $600,000 in revenue that's 8.07% of what's anticipated, expended $530,000 or 7.24%. The economic development authority collected $55,011.83, which is only 0.93%, which is way off. That's due to the budgeting of different grants and pledges for the pool project and things like that. A million of that we collected at the end of last fiscal year, but was budgeted for this fiscal year, so there's going to have to be some budget amendments and things to clean up. But that's why that 0.93% and it's so low. The utility authority collected 5.5%. Again, there's some loan revenue that we budgeted for that's kind of skewing some of those numbers from the percentage standpoint, but we're at $408,000 there with an expense of $164,000 or 2.24%, so well on track there. The sales tax is $362,000, just over $362,000 and then about $41,000 in use tax for $403,000. It's up 3.39% from July and 5.22 and up 5.8% of June 23. Overall, still looking pretty good. One of the things that we talked about and pointed out was the cash balance over the last few months having dropped. The reason for that, a lot of that is because we turned a lot of our cash into CDs for investments, some of the pledges and grants and things that we've gotten that we're setting off to the side, got those put into CDs and then we had some additional funds and some other accounts that we were able to put into some CDs so that they were at least making us money instead of sitting there doing nothing, so.
Council, any questions? Next item is the mayor's report. I want to, I want to give the council an update on the pool and where we're at because I think we're going to see things start moving pretty quickly here in the next few weeks. We have received to date $3.4 million in pledges or grants or gifts. We did receive the half a million dollar land and water conservation fund grant. In fact, we've got paperwork sitting in my email right now that I've got to send back to them so that we can get that money in our, in our accounts. And then, like Daniel mentioned, we have received a million dollars prior to the end of the fiscal year and all together, we have received a half a million grants and about 2.9 in pledges and donations. So we are anticipating that the grant we submit for the tobacco settlement endowment trust, it's a $500,000 that we can apply for twice and they award that on shovel-ready projects that are, you know, of a health and wellness nature and it's, it's definitely something that our project is. So that being the case, the shovel-ready part of it is where we're probably going to go out for bid here in the next few weeks. With that, the plans for the pool have been modified slightly. If you look over here, what we've got in council chambers this evening and we'll start getting these up in other places, but this is a culmination of our efforts working with the state historic preservation office as well as our engineers and our committee, but the drawing you see there represents 95% completed plans. So more than likely, our pool is going to look like that. And so we're, we're well into the process of getting the documents finished. We have started preparing different pieces of the bid packets to go out. The bid packet, when it goes out, and this is going to be a little bit unique, I mean, because we, we want and we know that, we have local trades and contractors who are willing to do some in-kind work or some, some other, you know, maybe materials at cost kind of efforts in order to help our community get the, get the pool back open. So with that, we had Dr. Whittick, Stephanie Whitey, Dr. Whitey, call every trade that we could think of in the community and then we also put it out on social media if anybody knew of anybody that hadn't been contacted to reach out to us. But basically, if you wanted to be involved in this project, we want you to be involved in this project and we want the people that are going to bid our project to know about you. So we're, we're going to have that as part of the bid packets and Dr. Whitey's phone calls were very productive. She had numerous contractors or vendors state that they, they would do, you know, either, you know, volunteer their labor or donate their material or sell their materials at cost or whatever that may be. So I have, I in the committee, we have pretty high level of confidence that we're going to keep this project in at budget. Right now, the budget has been capped at $5 million and I guess if, if the bids come back over $5 million, we'll go back to the drawing board, but I really think that's a realistic number. The, the money raised at 3.4 is not enough to fund the project, so what we are also hearing from numerous different groups and individuals in the community is that they are interested in funding our project or helping to fund our project, but they, they want to see that the city's committed to the project and that we actually put a shovel in the ground and start, you know, working on the project. Once we award bids, we can do that. We can show them that we are committed and that we are moving this project forward. But in the meantime, what we are looking at, and I have, Steve and I both talked with our bond counsel and we're looking at financing options to fund that gap. So we're, we're looking at, you know, at most, you know, $1.6 million to borrow. If we get the TSEC grant, we're down to 1.1. And so we're, we're looking at having that to borrow using the dedicated sales tax for Parks and Recreation. It's a half cent that was originally used to build the rec park, but the rec park's paid off. So using that half cent sales tax to fund the note on this project if we have to. What we want to do is to continue to seek donations so that different groups that haven't been able to make a donation to our project yet can have confidence that it's moving forward and, and help us pay down that debt without touching that sales tax anymore than we have to. So that, that's kind of where we're at right now. The, like I said, our bond counsel is preparing the information for our consideration. I would probably want to schedule a special meeting of city councils so that we can talk about this with our bond counsel. You can ask me questions, but I'm not, I'm not a finance attorney. So I mean, but the, our objection or our objective that we gave to him was to make sure we could afford it and make sure it wasn't overly burdensome on our taxpayers. So that's, that's going to be coming. We will, we will probably be having many more frequent conversations about the pool because we're, we're probably going to be out for bid here in the next six weeks. And so if you have questions in the meantime, any of the pool committee members are knowledgeable. Most of this stuff has gone through to the Parks and Rec Board as well, so you can reach out to them. Obviously, Steve, myself, Courtney are very well knowledgeable. Kay's here with us, Dr. Deckers here with us this evening. She's been leading our committee for a year or so. I can't even remember, a year and a half.
A year, I think, yeah.
But so we're, we're moving a lot of things in the right direction and they're all starting to kind of come together like we hoped they would. We don't have this as a discussion item tonight, so I'll, I'll keep moving on, but if you need to catch somebody afterwards, catch, you know, one of us and we can talk about the pool. If anybody in the audience is interested in making a gift, we would love to talk to you afterwards as well. The next item I've got is a long, it's along the lines of infrastructure needs and we've had, over the years, many, many, many conversations about our water infrastructure. I had several months ago reached out to our bond counsel again and told him, we need to do something. We've got, engineers estimated about 80 and, and you know, maybe after inflation, we're closer to $100 million worth of, of water infrastructure repairs and replacement projects. We're, we're not in a position to fund 80 to $100 million worth of projects, but on the other side of that, we're not in a position to hold off funding other projects until we can afford everything. It's just not realistic. So I asked Mr. Brooks, Alan Brooks, our bond counsel, yeah, our bond counsel, to get us some information on loan options, borrowing options in order to be able to do something. We do qualify for some lending at about $5 million. There is an opportunity to get some of our transaction fees reduced at this moment because there's a program that we can, we work with the city of Owasso and the city of Broken Arrow and the projects that they need to fund, combined with the projects we need to fund, it's all one transaction fee and that each of our cities will split according to the percentage of the debt we incur. And so that'll save us some money. But the other thing is, when I told him we wanted to do something, that right now we need to do something that's not going to increase our annual debt payments and it's not going to increase our rates any more than what we presently do with our annual CPI. So that's where he sharpened his pencil. He told us, you know, that, that we'd be eligible for about $5 million. So we took that $5 million and told our engineer, hey, what would you do with this? And the engineer met with Steve and Drake and they have decided that replacing the tank in the well field and our telemetry system and then some well upgrades in addition to about 20,000 linear feet of line in town would probably be the most appropriate way to spend that $5 million right now. Couple of things that that does, the, obviously, the well field, without the storage at the well field, that's how we gravity feed our entire system into town. So if that tank's not there, we don't have enough pressure coming off our wells to, to feed water into town. So the, the tank storage out there has got to be improved and that, you know, that's the importance of that. The telemetry system with what the folks that, that met with, and of course, this would be a bid project, but we met with a contractor the other day that basically, if we put the telemetry system in, over the course of four years, we'll save about $80,000 in vehicle maintenance, labor going to and from the well field. We drive to the well field every day and that's 60 miles round trip.
Not two or three times a day.
If not, we have to drive every day to check the telemetry. If we're there more than that, it's because something else is wrong. But that's what we got going on there. We feel like the well field projects that need to be done, absolutely need to be done just to ensure that we can keep water coming to the city of Alba. And then the 20,000 feet of line, that's going to allow us to get some water lines out of the streets so that we can repair streets and have a long-lasting repair in place instead of, you know, fit patching lines here and there and tearing up the streets to do it. So that's the purpose of that $5 million. That, again, like I said, Mr. Brooks is preparing all the information for council consideration. We'll probably have that at a special meeting as well. He'll be able to answer more questions related to the actual dollars and cents and financing side of that. I've given you everything I got on that. You can ask me and I can pass questions along to him, but that is my understanding right now. I don't, those were the two big things that I needed to make sure and get council informed on. I've had, I've had and probably will have for the next few weeks, several speaking obligations with back-to-school time. I always appreciate schools reaching out to me. I love going to talk to their students. I do want to welcome Jacob, I didn't catch your last name.
Buck.
Jacob Buck. He's a student. He's volunteering with the city and he's doing some community service as well, but he's interested in learning more about local government. So those of you that are sitting at this table or have sat here before, feel free to reach out and welcome him and impart whatever knowledge you can upon him. And I'm going to shut up. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, guys. Next item, the business manager's report.
All right, so first thing I've got for you, I put this list of street closures and times for the car show. I'll get you a copy of it, by the way. Just, it's just for your information, city council, no action to get out of showing what, make sure you guys knew what was going on for the car show. They completed the, the package the head attorney, so we'll get that run through the appropriate agencies in the city and get that approved and back to them, so it's easy to do. We had a sanitation committee meeting this week, or last week, I don't know what date it is, and it's kind of going along with a part of my top science project that the mayor handoffed me. Kind of looking at, you know, do we, do we start looking at how to spend the money or find a money spend to get polycars reversed at Alba? There's a couple of other options we're looking at. A few of the things we kind of talked about was maybe adding to the city ordinance that the, all ba, all trash is being bagged. We're still kind of talking about that. We made a mistake and started handing out 55 gallon drums, steel drums at one point, not thinking about it and not looking at the city ordinance because the ordinance supposedly says 35 gallons or smaller, but we either see gave out 55 gallon drums. And now we're finding we've got guys who are getting hurt picking those things up because of bag, the trash isn't in bags, so they get to pick them up and dump them. And so we're trying to look at a way of finding some plastic, either some plastic 55 gallon drums or some plastic smaller 35 gallon drums just to make it easier on the guys when they do have to pick those things up. But I'm still working to get some more quotes and information from the other waste management folks around the area to try to see what makes sense for, for us. Along with that same science project, we've tested a couple of different GPS trackers. We found one that we liked, like the dashboard, like the maintenance scheduling abilities, like the monitoring, the tracking that it does. And so we're going to outfit basically all the city vehicles or F3 fixtures and below over these trackers so we can start tracking our maintenance, we can track what's going on with them. The system will actually tell you what the check engine light on it is for, so you don't have to go to, to, or rather, you don't have to go to the computer and things. So it helps with maintenance, hopefully prevent any catastrophic failures. So, and.
It'll also help us in liability situations where we could, if somebody says, we saw your city worker doing such and such in city vehicle, it'll, it'll tell us if they turn, you know, sharply on a curve, if they stop suddenly, if they're not wearing their seatbelt and it keeps a track of where they are.
Tell if they're, how fast they're going at a certain point. So if somebody says, I saw him at 2:00 this day going down Flanet, nine o'clock on there, I could go back there and look at that and I could say, no, he was, he was doing, you know, 25 or whatever. So you could really go through there and really dig up a lot of stuff, so it's pretty neat. And last thing, just so everybody's tracking, we had meters installed in town. They're not in town anymore. They were breaking more stuff than they're fixing, so I asked Coromane to get rid of them and find us a new meter installing company. So we did. It's been delayed about two and a half weeks before the new company comes in, but we're still ahead of schedule because we weren't supposed to get these meters till December or January. So I felt like a two and a half week delay was well worth our time because our water guys spent more time fixing their brakes than, than they were doing what they should have been doing. So we had to get rid of those guys. We'll get new ones in and if they're not, you know, cutting the mercy, we'll find new ones to replace them, but we'll get all the meters installed sooner or later and we're looking forward to, it's going to really help us out, saves time and money, a lot of manpower. I think that's what I've got.
Do we have any idea of the cost of the GPS system?
Yeah, they're about $20 a unit. And we can also apply for a grant that's called the SMART grant. If we get that, that same company, we can get both forward and rear-facing dash cams so you can not only see what's going on in front of you, you can see if the driver's back there texting while he's driving or anything, people like that. Certainly at the time of an accident, you can go back and look back through that and see what their driver's doing on that accident happen, you know, actually. That's not, finance is feasible for us right now, but if we get that grant, that's something we, we want to do with that.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you. Next item, number seven, is a presentation from NWSU president, Dr. Bohaniford.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. I'll be brief. I know you have a lead the agenda, but we just wanted to come back and address the council with Councilman Parsons had a question for us during the last scholarship presentation. We wanted to get that data and come back. So if you remember, we talked about asking about the graduation rate for the students that were getting the incentive scholarship from the city. And so we actually went back and picked two cohorts. We picked our most recent, which was 2017, and then we went back a couple of years to 2015. Both were very similar in recipients, 303 compared to 341. And remember, not all the students that we bring in that first year are receiving the scholarship. So when you think about that number, I know we have larger classes than that, but that's the only ones that received the amount. The average scholarship was between $800 and $900 for both cohorts and we were excited. The graduation rate was close to 60% on both, 56% and 58%. And we, we started as we got into this, and I appreciate Councilman Parsons' question because when you look at this, so I, I started digging into the, the data a little bit longer and asked our folks to generate. In both cohorts, we looked how long they were staying to graduate. In one cohort, we had 81% that took three years or longer for graduation and the other one was 75% three years or more. So not only will we get into that return of investment for, for the year that you're giving the scholarship, most of these students are going to be staying two to, well, some of them may be up to five more years. For both classes, it was 60% that took four years or more for graduation. So it was good data. It was good for us to look at that and I think that's something probably, you know, every three to four years, we'll probably start pulling more cohorts and make it, see if we're making progress on that rate or, you know, staying around the same. So be happy to answer any questions. If not, look forward to seeing you the next time. Appreciate all your work.
I'm presuming why the 2016 cohort was skipped and not done, but can you address?
We just went back a couple of years. It was, that was random.
Oh, okay. I assume that would have been the year that would have graduated. If four years would have been right in the middle of COVID, which would have been.
Well, it, it varies because you'll have some people that are getting that scholarship. We might have a transfer that might have a year left or maybe two years. So that's what's going to kind of vary in some of that three or more. Of course, the freshmen usually typically, you know, four, four to five years. Thank you. Good question.
Any other questions from the council?
Appreciate telling you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr.. All right. Next item is number eight, Oklahoma Natural Gas Franchise Agreement Presentation. Marty, I'll let you address the council and introduce your folks if you need to.
Okay, you've been mayor, city council, city manager. It's nice to be here tonight and on behalf of Oklahoma Natural Gas Company, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to visit with you this evening about a franchise. I have with me Dustin Frederick. Dustin is our managing attorney. And I also have Jay Cooper. Now, he's not a stranger to anybody in the room, I don't think, but Jay is our local manager that takes care of, takes great care of our customers in Alba and the surrounding area. So thanks, Jay, for all you do and for being here tonight. I prepared some information and I believe you have that in your packets. I'd like to go over that and then I would like to open it up and offer an opportunity for you to ask any questions and for us to have some discussion. We have served Alba for many years and we currently have about 3,000 customers. And as you know, most of our infrastructure is underground, so we're proud to say that we have a 99% reliability rate. The first thing that I want to go over is what a franchise agreement is and then we'll talk a little bit about the benefit for Alba, the partnership that we have with Oklahoma Natural Gas and the city of Alba, and then we'll open it up for discussions. So I'm on page three of your handout. What is a franchise agreement? Franchise agreement is, a franchise is an agreement that defines the roles and responsibilities to use the public ways. A fee is collected on the Oklahoma Natural Gas bill and then passed through to the city every month for the use of those public ways. The franchise agreement would benefit the Alba residents by providing funding that would help the government to, and provide proper authority to use the public ways for the distribution of natural gas. So the fee is collected on the ONG bill and then passed through to the city of Alba. We do that monthly. 100% of the revenue is passed through back to the city of Alba to use for the community needs. use for the community needs. So when we talk about the partnership with Oklahoma Natural Gas, some of you might remember that we purchased the system from Xena Gas Company in the 60s. And we have been serving Alba ever since. Most recent franchise agreement that we had with the city of Alba expired September 8, 2019. We have had discussions with your mayor, your city manager, some of your council members and others about a renewal. And that's what we're here tonight to discuss and answer any questions that you might have. Most recently, I spoke with your new city manager, Mr. Ford. And I, I want to talk a little bit about our partnership and some of the things that we do in Alba. We are members of your Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a member, along with the mayor, of the Executive Business Council, which is a leadership group sponsored by the Career Tech. We supported the civic, the city park enhancement. And during COVID, we supported the Alba Wesleyan Church, the food bank there. We are a leadership Northwest Oklahoma sponsor, and I've been a presenter for them several times. We are a sponsor and a donor of the Woods County Economic Development Group. And the best thing that we bring to this community is Jay Cooper, is someone to take care of you, to support any needs that you have, and take care of any emergency that might arise. We don't have a Jay Cooper in every community this size, so it's a big benefit. And I think I've embarrassed you, and I apologize for that. So anyway, so we look forward to continuing the partnership. I want to answer any questions that you might have, and Dustin can certainly support that. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor up to those questions.
So we have had multiple conversations. The, I think one of the things that, as I've learned more about what a franchise agreement is, is that, number one, it is a statutory requirement that with any of the utility providers that are doing work in our community that we, we're obligated to have, they're obligated to have a franchise agreement with the municipality, and I think it obligates us likewise. That has been something that we haven't had in place. Like Marty said, we haven't had it in place since 2019. The, most of the conversations that we've had related to the franchise agreement have been just opposition to a franchise fee. Now, is it, is my understanding correct that the fee is optional? We don't have to have a fee, but we have to have an agreement?
Yes, the proper way for the public ways is to have the city approve the agreement with the utility, and then it goes before an election of the residents to approve the use of the public ways, because that's the public's ways. So you can have a franchise at zero percent if that's what's chosen. And then it still sets out all the rights and responsibilities of how we work with you and how you work with us. It's all, you know, in that 20-page or so document. But that, that fee can be zero if that's what the city chooses.
And then, just because I don't remember one, and we've got a lot of new faces here, but there, so there is an amount that is like 2% or 3% that the council can approve, and then any amount beyond that is a vote of the people, or is any?
No, it's all the people.
All.
0% is still approved, because that approves our right to use the public ways in the community. So even at 0%. Now, 3% is what your prior franchise was at, is 3%. And that's, for the most part, the standard franchise amount that we have with most communities is 3%. Some differ. Some are less, some may be more. But the majority of them are at 3% with us. And 3% for this community, that's about, probably just short of $100,000 per year that would come back to the community.
If we look at the past 12 months?
Yeah. It's a percentage of what's billed, and it's, it sets that out in the franchise. But it's about $100,000 impact at 3%.
Why was it not re-upped since 2000, after 2001?
It was, at that time, council felt it was a tax on the, on a good percentage of the citizens. It wasn't shared with all the citizens, but it was a tax on all, on 3,000 customers or whatever it was. And didn't, I think there were some other parts of the terms that were not agreeable as well. I can't remember exactly, but I think most of it had to do with that fee being more of a tax.
I can speak to it, because I led the opposition against it. So that was the big, big part of it, is essentially if I'm any other entity and I need to utilize an easement or I need to do work, then I have to come and get permitting and go through this whole process, right? And that costs. As a businessman, I have to pay back to do that. Effectively, what I felt this was doing was saying that ONG could come in and do that, and they're permitting, and all of their fees and all of that were being covered as a, as a pass-through tax to the citizens, which I didn't believe was appropriate, right, or fair. And I still don't believe that's appropriate, right, or fair. Now, we've had some conversation, and there are, there are additional benefits to having the franchise agreement in place. I would still staunchly be opposed to anything above 0%.
And I think, maybe not staunchly, but.
It would be a no vote if it was over 0% for me. I'll tell you that outright.
I would, I would only probably be interested in the, in the actual percentage fee if we were able to decide that there was a cause that it needed to go towards.
And that would have to be spelled out very explicitly.
But, I don't know. We, we need to, we need to get this done. It's been too long without, I'm not, I mean, I'd rather see the agreement get signed without a fee than not get signed for another, you know, however many months it might be if we don't do it this time.
The benefits, and then just to answer a few of those questions, you know, one of the big ones is indemnification for the city. Two of the bigger ones are going to be indemnification and provide some indemnification rights to the city. Another one that is very beneficial is that if we're in the public way and we're using it correct, and then the city has a project and they are coming through and you need us to move our facilities, because say you're putting sidewalks or you're extending the roadway, it'll, it'll be addressed in the franchise, but we would have to move those facilities at our cost. So the city would not be reimbursing us. Versus it will have in the franchise that if, for some reason, we're in an area where we're in a private right-of-way that we had, and it's not in the public way, and say the city's moving into that private right-of-way, in that situation, the city reimburses us to move our facilities. But if it's in the public way, it will state in that franchise that the city does not incur that cost.
So is that, this is top of mind, I mean, we probably will have a utility relocation with regard to our pool project. Is it?
If there was a franchise in place, and we have facilities that were in the public ways, and you needed to move it for the city pool, that should qualify for you would not have to reimburse us to move our facilities.
So this is 25 years, correct?
The, what Oklahoma allows is no longer than a 25-year term.
But, I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, 25 years from now, I mean, that's a long time to any sort of agreement. And that's my, that's going to be my, I mean, I don't have anything really against it, but man, I mean, you could see new people in here every two years, really. So I mean, so I just, I feel like making a decision now that's going to be in place for 25 years is kind of.
The reason you would want to go for longer term is, one, they do take some time, and plus the election cost is, there's a cost. We, we pick up the cost of the election itself, but there is a cost to do that. So elections are not free. So us coming in every year, every two years, you know, it is very difficult for planning purposes. The, typically, the largest agreement that communities have with the 25-year term is usually they're more concerned about the rate, right? So they're concerned about, well, there's a lot of things that could happen, and I don't want to commit to 3% for 25 years if, over time, something else happens to where I could be getting larger percentage than that. And so typically, those communities that are concerned with that, there's a couple different provisions that can be put into the franchise. Some will have, like, over the 25-year term, every five years, there's a slight escalator. So let's say it goes, it starts at 3%, and in five years, it goes to 3.05. So it keeps up a little bit with inflation and other things. Another item that some communities will have in there is a different version of what we refer to as the Favor Nations Clause. So what that is, is it's saying that, hey, if there's a community during that 25 years that gets a franchise that's of similar size or however we agree to draft that, you would get the benefit of that increase. Say, if a community goes out and passes one at 3.5%, you could draft the franchise and said, if that community has an election and passes one at 3.5%, we get 3.5%, or the city of Alba does. Does that make sense?
So with a, tell me.
A different city. So, so I kind of refer to it as the Favor Nations Clause. So say, let's just say, the city of Broken Arrow, say, within the 25 years, they pass a franchise at 3.5%. Depending on how you have the wording of that, we would notify you to say, hey, your Favor Nation Clause is triggered. And we had a community that passed it at 3.5%. Therefore, you can have the benefit of, we will raise yours to 3.5%.
So, so because a different city there raised theirs, we could raise ours without any of our citizens?
There's different, there's different versions of it. So some cities will have it in there to where it's drafted, and that's a part of the, you know, what's approved by the voters, it's drafted, that it goes up automatically. Some cities have chosen that, okay, we want the option to maybe increase that, but we don't want it to go automatically. It has to require city council approval. So we have some that said, okay, notifies when it can be triggered, but you bring it back to us and we have to bring it to city council to approve it. I will tell you, the majority of them, they have it automatic to where it's not coming back to city council voting to increase the amount. But there are some communities that have concerns that, hey, we want to be able to make that decision. And we've had some that we've brought it back to say, hey, your Favor Nation Clause is increased. It goes from, you know, three to three and a half. And the council says we're not interested in increasing that fee. To us, we're satisfied where we're at. You know, because they can look at what's going on in the community.
So what's the shortest term for that agreement that you guys would be comfortable with? I mean, is there a, I mean, you have a number?
We would, we would go back. We probably, we have one that I can think of that we have done 10 years. I think we've got one community that we've done 15, but we would really prefer to do 20 to 25, just because of the length of time and, and putting some provisions in there of what you're concerned with. You know, we would rather look at, what are the concerns preventing you from doing a longer term, and maybe we can address that within the agreement. From a historical standpoint about, you know, the zero-in rates, there was a time before my time where whatever the franchise fees were with a community, we built it as part of our rate. We're probably aware we're a regulated utility, so the state regulates us through the Corporation Commission, and they regulate what our rates are and what our profits and revenues can be. So there was a time to where those were considered business expenses. We still collected them, but, you know, they're aware of all our expenses and all what's coming in, and they regulate what our rates are and how much we make. They came to the conclusion that, you know, with that being an agreement with the city and being different, they did not want to get in the middle of that. And so we have a tariff, like many of the other utilities have, that says you go agree with what your rates are with the city for your franchise fees, and you're allowed to pass those through. And so that's what led to that, but that's the history of it. It used to be included in rates, like we do everything else, but it was kind of separated out and chosen to be a separate line item that you put on the bill.
So in 2000, what was it, 2019?
This one expired.
So during that expired time, was that 3% included at that time?
No, we're 1,000 years away from it. So, and I can probably look up historically how long ago that changed, but we'll probably talk in decades plus.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a separate line item on your bill. It'll say franchise fee, is what it says.
And since 2019, it hasn't been on there?
Yeah, it hasn't been on there since there was nothing approved. Since there has been nothing approved, it was taking off the bill, and so nothing's been collected. And like Marty had said, that's 100% is a flow-through back to the city of Alba. Of course, if a person doesn't pay their bill.
They collect 3% fee and it comes back to us?
Yes. So whatever's collected through that separate line item, there's a monthly check that goes back to the city.
In 2019, it was roughly $60,000. It's like, it's a percentage of the rates, so, you know, it's higher now than it was then.
And that's largely part with being a natural gas service, gas costs have been up. So a big part of that typically a good 50%. It fluctuates obviously of what your customers' bills are is going to be related to gas costs. So obviously, when you have times when gas costs are very low, which it probably was in 2019 versus what we've had post winter storm Bury, the gas costs have been significantly higher over the past couple of years. They are going back down, but.
Who reviews and regulates that if, you know, if there was a 1%, 2%, 3% passed, that that is what the city's receiving is accurate?
So there's audit rights in that agreement as well? And I believe they send a reconciliation with it.
I mean, this has, for any percentage, has to be passed by the people.
Yes, it's required by the state.
We have to approve it. I guess a vote, people have to approve it, then it's special.
Yo. I know Marty's ready to get this finished. What, I mean, what are the details you want to see drawn up in this franchise agreement, guys? I mean, is it, terms and fees, I think, are the main things that we're concerned about, or the length of the term are the main things that everybody's concerned about. But are there any other concerns that you would have for putting this together? And do you have specific, we know where Daniel stands on the fee, but does anybody else have, we need to get this drawn up so that we can get it in front of council, so that we can get it, get it back out in front of people.
What I can do is that we had an agreement, you know, back in 2019, maybe 2018, when we started discussions of a draft. So what I can do is put together, it's a fairly standard agreement. It, it has a lot in it because it probably should. If you're familiar with what gross ordinances used to be, those were like one-page documents that cities had, and it was just passed at the city level. Not much detail to it, so there's more detail. But I'd probably propose I would just send a fresh version over, and I can leave the percentage blank if you would like, or just put zero in there. We can put three. I mean, whatever that amount is, you would just update it. And then council members could.
Do you currently have any cities that are at 0%?
We do have, I know we have some. So we operate in Texas, Oklahoma, and Kansas. We do have some at 0%. There's not very many of them, but I am aware of some that are at 0%. Like I said, the vast majority are at that average 3%.
So if we put it at 0%, what's, I mean, I see the negative for, I think it's us, we don't have that cash to use for projects. But what's the negative for you guys if we put it, is there any negative for you all if we put it at 0%?
One, we would like the franchise because it's legally required, right, for us to use it. And then, two, it does lay out the rights and responsibilities. So we're clear on many of those things. It's how we operate today and what we do. But it is at least a document to refer to, that if there's some disagreement, it says, hey, this states that we don't have to reimburse you for this type of project. It's in the document. So that's actually a benefit for both of us. And as far as the revenue side of it, obviously, to the extent that it is zero, it is on our customers' bills. So when they look at their rate impact, they do look at the whole bill entirely, even though we may explain that, hey, that is actually, you approved that as a part of your franchise when you went out to vote, and it's, you know, collecting what the residents approved. They do see it as part of their overall bill. Obviously, we try to do all we can to keep bills as low as we can. And like everybody else, things are going up. But it's, you know, what is there for is to compensate the communities for use of the public ways. It's an asset, in a sense, you know, those public ways are an asset.
Community compensates itself. See, this was my circular problem.
Yeah.
Well, see, yeah, you said you do it at 0%, but then we have the franchise agreement. They have to move it for the pool. We're not out, the city is not paying for that moving pieces, their stuff.
And I'm, I used to be very opposed to the 25-year term. I'm not as opposed to it now, especially with the stipulation that it's 0%, just because of those additional identification, indemnification, and then the movement. And then the movement. In those cases, they can, they could pay for itself.
I think if they've done 10-year agreements in the past, it can't hurt, I mean.
I, I'm not saying I wouldn't prefer a 10- to 15-year. And I'm not saying, that's not a sword out of town.
And I just suggest going back to what is the reason you're doing 10%? Just, or I mean, 10 years, just because it's 10 years?
Because 25 years is a long time.
Or is there something in there that you think is going to happen, especially if you're collecting a zero or whatever that amount is?
In the future, they don't want to collect a zero anymore. I mean, I would be against that. I would still want to know as a citizen, but.
I just think it's a, you know, I don't know, it's my.
So 25 years, are there?
That is the typical, the vast majority are 25 years.
Can we, is there, is there language in the agreement that would allow our council to come back to you and say, let's renegotiate terms?
No. I mean, it's approved by the voters, right? So you're sending the agreement to approve and you're sending it out to the voters and your residents are approving what that agreement is. Now, there is a clause in there. I mean, there's not that there's nothing in there. There is a clause in there that talks about if the natural gas industry is greatly restructured in some fashion that would impact the revenues and how the franchise operates. It does have a clause in there that in case that were to happen, you could come back. And that's a safeguard that some of the cities have asked for and it does make sense. I don't know if we're going to have any great natural gas utility restructuring anytime in the near future, but you don't know what's going to happen, like you said, for 25 years.
What survivability is it, does the agreement survive ONG if you sell or what?
There is some clauses in there as well that you'll see that talks about if, you know, it did sell and assignment. So there are some provisions in there as well. Now, we don't have in there that you could hold up to sale. You all are prob, may or may not be aware that in 2014, you know, we were all part of the One Oak umbrella. If you're aware of One Oak, and then they spun off their distribution utilities in 2014 to be a separate entity. Actually, it wasn't really a sale. It was just a spinoff. But undetermined consequences of some agreements that didn't have anything to discuss or it said that we had to get approvals. So, you know, there were some issues with that when we were closing that transaction of having to go to communities to get them to approve that we could assign it basically to ourselves because it was moving from One Oak into a new entity named called One Gas, even though we were the same company and all the officers were the same. So we've learned from that, that we do have some language in there and made sure that it doesn't say that if an instance like that came up, that we have to go out to, you know, hundreds of communities to get approvals, which makes it very difficult. But I would just encourage that I could get a draft put together. And then you all, if we have questions, we're more than happy to come back and go through it. Or if you have a study session or something and we want to do a page turn, we've done that community too. We're more than happy to do that because we definitely want you all to understand what it is.
I think I'm okay. I don't want to die, like you said, by the sword on the link as long as it's 0%. It seems like a tax to me. So I don't want to put a percent on it. I'd rather it be 0%.
So do you want a draft with 0 and 25 or do you want, you want lengths in there?
My thing is, how does it hurt to make it for 10 or even 15? I just don't, I don't see any negatives there. That's my thing. I mean, for the, there's negatives for them, for the city. So I just, you know, any decisions that I can make up here that, you know, 25 years, that's just as concerning. I mean, to me, I don't know.
The negative is, is that in 10 years, I could change it from 0%. That's, I mean, that's how I do that. So 25 years on it, it's 0% in 25 years.
Technically, you look at it as you're locking in no tax for 25 years.
That's why I said usually typically what communities concern is revolves around what that fee is. But it's usually the opposite. I will tell you issue is they're wanting to not lock it in at one amount for that long of a period of time. And that way, I'm assuming they could budget for any, you know, automatic or non-automatic increases that would be going on through those, that time period. The 10 years, I would say is fairly short just because, you know, we usually try to get within like two years of it coming up. Some communities take longer to get out to and there's more discussion than others. Not length, but I'm just saying that, you know, there's a lot of.
Five-year process?
Well, there's a lot of discussion at times and so we try to do a good job of backing up. 25. The majority are 25.
And 25 is the longest you can go?
The longest by statute. It's capped at 25 and so that's why it's 25. The statute caps it at 25. And just for comparison, obviously Oklahoma's different, but the two other states we operate in are Kansas. They cap theirs at 20 and Texas, they have no cap. So we have some in Texas that are indefinite. We have some that are 50 years. And so when it's time to renew, that document that's 50 years old looks a little bit different than what our standard form looks like. But there's not a cap on a period in Texas. So we have some that are much longer.
I'm okay with 25 if that means we're not putting another fee on top of.
I'm hearing 25 and 0%.
You're on 25? Okay, we'll get a draft, Mr. Ford. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming up and explaining that to us probably better than it's been explained in the past. And so appreciate that and we'll look forward to seeing the document and getting it out in front of people.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Congratulations on the pool. That's very, very exciting. That's getting close. You said six weeks?
Hopefully we're advertising for bids, yeah.
That's great. Good news. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine. Discussion and action to approve the artist's rendering for the Alba Mural Society mural that is planned for the north side of the Alba Police Department building.
Mr. Ford. So talked to Erin Davis. She finally got a reading from the artist about 4:30 today. And it wasn't anything I would feel comfortable bringing to the city council that was that bad. So we're going to postpone our mural on the north end of the police department until next, end of the, kind of a separate one-off in March with the mural society. We're just waiting until next year's mural fest and try to get something that we want on this end of the building. So we're just going to wait.
Was the, the one that I sent to you was it had, I don't know, like place thing?
Kind of loosely and it was not very good. So I said I, it was so bad, I wouldn't provide it to city council. And I'm no, I'm no art critic.
Tell us how you feel.
I'm after this one, but it was bad. I would like to see it though. I was sworn to secrecy.
So we can't see it though?
No, so the mural society didn't want you presenting it?
No. Yeah, they didn't want anybody to see it.
Not just Steve.
Not just me. They didn't want anybody to see it either. It was going really bad though. It was. I could have maybe drawn better. Maybe some crowns and some more.
Okay, so there's no action to take there then? That would die for lack of a motion. Item 10 is presentation regarding the annual agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. to provide 10 new tasers once and to provide at least two new training taser cartridges per taser per year for the Alba Police Department. Mr. Ford's going to give us some information on this. This is not something that requires council action, but wanted you guys to know.
Yeah, so it's basically, it's a annual agreement for five years. And the key to this is all of our tasers are old and they're, they can't be repaired anymore. So they don't make parts for them anymore. So it's gets us 10 brand-new tasers. And then the key part to this is, is we get, like it says in here, two new training cartridges per taser per year. And that's what's required to keep our police officers current as far as their qualifications to use the taser. It's roughly $5,500 a year for that. And that includes the two new cartridges per taser. So it's really not a bad bargain to get 10 new tasers and all the training stuff they need. If you want to see it, I've got a long list. Everything's included in this thing. And it's holsters and battery packs and all sorts of stuff like that. But it's really quite a bit of stuff for the project paid for a year. But I thought that's important to bring to your attention that we're going to go forward with that because I think it really sets our law enforcement offices up for success as far as tasers and being trained and being certified. And so now this reduces a little bit of liability.
What is the lifespan of one of these tasers that we're?
So it's supposed to be about 25 to 8 years, what the chief of work had told me.
And how old are ones we're using?
A lot older than that.
All right, good deal.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford? Item 11 is discussion and action to authorize the city business manager to apply for the US EPA Brownfield Grant for professional demolition and abatement for areas of the swimming pool that had been contaminated by chlorine in the past. Steve, you've got some information in here. Due to, we don't know what we're going to run into necessarily, but the condition of our pump house and the pool itself was pretty poor. And we do remember that in 2017, 18, somewhere in that area, that health department shut us down for having pool water not going into the sanitary sewer system. So this particular grant, we're going to be asking for $200,000. It's not, my understanding is it's not a cash grant. The EPA will send somebody in here to actually do the abatement. So whatever is, I mean, if we've got, you know, ground underneath the basin that's, you know, chlorine contaminated or the, you know, concrete and everything part of the pump house and all of that, if that's contaminated, they're not going to send us money. They're going to, they're going to do the project. And so if they, if they do, if we have the entire, if they do consider the entire pool basin and pump house to be contaminated, then that saves us at least $100,000 on our estimate for a non-hazardous, you know, abatement or a demolition of the pool basin and pump house. So we, we feel like since they, the health department closed us down over the amount of chlorine that was getting into the soil, that then the EPA ought to see it proper to professionally. Abate hazardous material.
Comes over 200,000, then that would be on us. Now, is this something?
We may want to reapply for some more under that grant. So this, and if you read this information I put in here, the only flyers that are defined talks about a revolving loan fund, but there's sub, subparts to that. And so the Brownfield Grant that we're applying for is strictly a grant. It's not a loan. It's not matching. So it's just strictly a grant for contaminated lands that can be rehabilitated and used to generate tax, or high dollars.
So is there a, are there, is the testing for this mandatory? That they test for chlorine contamination or are we essentially subjecting to that by doing this?
We pretty much are. I mean, you can walk into this, to the pump house, you just walk in that, walk in that door and you won't stay very long.
Right.
You can just tell it's completely, all the ground, all the walls, everything's contaminated with chlorine all over.
Well, I mean, eventually they're going to have to test, so we might as well.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Are they going to come in and test regardless?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When we start to demo, they're going to have to test it.
Because what I didn't want to have happen is, is we're like, oh, we're pretty sure, we do this and now it makes them come in and now we've got 400,000 of demo work because they decided that, you know, it's contaminated, it's 20 feet deep and we've spent more money than we needed to in the first place.
No, I mean, either way, they're going to test for contamination.
Especially how the department come back in. If they shut us down, they got to come back in.
Okay.
How could this affect the timeline? Is that any, I mean, is there, could it be, I don't know, we're working with their contractors to do the demolition?
If it's, I mean, we're going to, we really don't know. But. Whether we, whether it affects the timeline or not, it'll have to be done. Now, it doesn't, it doesn't slow down the fact that the project will start.
Okay.
You start some of the areas and other things like that. There's plenty of other stuff to do on the pool project. Plenty of stuff.
I'd motion to authorize the city business manager to apply for the US EPA Brownfield Grant for professional demolition and abatement for areas of the swimming pool that have been contaminated by chlorine in the past.
A motion from Mr. Winters and second from Ms. Beer to authorize the city business manager to apply for the EPA Brownfield Grant for chlorine contamination. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item 12, discussion and action to declare surplus and authorize sale of 21 Alba Fire Department self-contaminated breathing apparatuses, SCBA's and 41 air tanks and to authorize city business manager and/or mayor to sign all paperwork to transact the sale. Similar to what we've done in the past, if we have things that we don't need anymore and we don't need these because we got our new SCBA's, our process is that we must declare them surplus. And then there are numerous methods of liquidating those surplus items that are compliant with state law. And so we can sell them outright if we find somebody that wants them. You might know a little bit more about if anybody wants them than I know, but.
Yeah, I think the chief contacted a few communities that are interested in them. And it may not be the entire package. It may just be like some of the smaller towns want four or five, you know, and so. But he's got some leads on some folks that are looking for some SCBA's.
Legally, is there any way to offer those to area, I mean, fire departments around here that we're working with on fires? Is there?
Once, yeah, once we can, I mean, unless we say that we're going to sell them and we can change the language when, if somebody wants to make a motion otherwise, but we can give them away.
You can transact a sale for $0.
Well, that's, I just, I'd, you know, make sense to offer them to the people who are helping us on, around people that are responding to them. I mean, if there's people in our area in need of them.
I feel like we help them more than the other way. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to local people that we're going to be on a fire with, you know, selling at a discount.
I don't know what the value of them is.
I think, I think he's calculating about $2,000, $2,500 a set. So that's, that's the two tanks and then the apparatus that goes over your face and then all your pass alarms and all sorts of stuff. So now that may be the wrong, I think that's what he told me, it's a $2,500.
Well, I mean, if they're, if they're still significant value, then definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, there, there was something there, not worth, I mean, they're still, they're still surplus.
I would make a motion to declare surplus and authorize the sale of 21 Alba Fire Department SCBA's and 41 air tanks and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all paperwork to transact the sale.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and second by Mr. Parsons to declare surplus of 21 SCBA's and 41 air tanks and authorize the manager and mayor, and/or mayor to sign the paperwork to do transact the sale. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item 13, is discussion and action to approve the city of Alba's workplace wellness policy as applies to TSET grant application. Mr. Ford will give the presentation on the policy, but this is a requirement in order to submit application for the $500,000 for TSET funding for the pool.
Yeah, so this one, the city workplace wellness policy, it just has some guidelines, kind of laid out by, by TSET, you know, just things you need to have around the office, you know, snacks can be more turned calories, you know, you got a fresh water.
Steve offered me a granola bar today.
See, that's what I mean. We're healthy around here, okay? Besides the fact, made a supreme, first one pizza. So it's just kind of, it's, this is standard, this is standard wording straight from TSET that they want to see for us to stand a decent chance of getting a TSET grant. So it's just, I hate to say it's formality, but it's formality that they want to see us have this policy in place to get the grant.
And it's, I'm assuming like snacks over 200 calories, that's, it can't be over 200, that's. Regularly provided snacks from the employer does not have any stipulations on. does not have any stipulations on what the employees could bring themselves. Okay.
Well, so you had a bag of apples break around.
Just saying, if somebody wants to bring themselves a candy bar to work, I don't want to call me.
And one other thing, one other thing, there's, it talks about physical activity, I don't know if anybody's aware, but the city pays for anybody that wants it and will use it, pays for their membership to the Wellness Center.
So we're currently doing that? That's awesome.
But we're working on some stipulations of that, I mean, we're not gonna pay for some of this stuff to just pay for it, not go.
Yeah.
If we're gonna pay for it, you're gonna go use it. So they're gonna track us, you know, but.
The only question I had on that was the providing employees with at least 30 minutes of paid physical activity break time in addition to their regular. So is that, I mean, tell me, if someone's working a physical job, how's that, how are we gonna determine that right there?
That's just kind of the standard statement, I mean.
We provide, most, most employers provide a 15-minute break period per four hours work. Usually, it's not required by law, but it is usual.
Yeah.
So I would imagine we do that, do we not?
Yeah.
So technically, we need to stipulate. Most people don't ever take it, but they can't do that.
The bargaining is actually other than their breaks.
Right.
Yeah, so, so say, one of our, I mean, if the, I mean, once the employees get that, they, if I was employer, I would say, you know, I get my extra 30 minutes if I want to go walk or do, that's kind of concerning.
I don't think that it states that it's in addition to. They just, it has to be a paid break. So normally.
It's an additional schedule, scheduled meal breaks.
Regularly scheduled meal break.
Okay.
So they get their hour lunch, that's saying that doesn't count. But if, if the policy already states that they can have two 15-minute breaks, there's your 30 minutes.
So that's about our.
As an employer that I had offered that wellness, and like I would leave at 4:30 pending any other office stuff. If I was able to, I would go up to the Wellness Center for 30 minutes till 5:00. And that was my break.
So if we have employees at the state office here and they want to leave at 4:30 to get their wellness, and if they don't have to take another break, are we gonna allow them to do it?
We always had to make sure somebody was in the office. We couldn't all just go.
Yeah, and all breaks are subject to management approval.
All breaks are subject to management approval.
Sorry I asked that while I'm getting, Heather's looking at me and smiling like, yes, employee working early every day.
For wellness activity.
Well, Heather gets here at 3:30 every morning, so I mean, geez, of course she does.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Alva's workplace wellness policy as it applies to the TSET grant application.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Beer, second from Mr. Winters, to approve the City of Alva workplace wellness policy. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Next item along the same lines, it's the City of Alva's workplace tobacco-free policy.
Yep, same thing. It's a requirement for the TSET grant that we have to have this policy in place.
And then this has been previously approved. This is, this isn't a new policy for the City of Alva. It might be new language, but this.
And we've had this in our city, our policy, our employee handbook policy, employee policy handbook. That was already in there well before we did this. So this has been around for a while, the Wellness Center was new, but this has been around for quite a while.
I'd make a motion to approve the City of Alva's workplace tobacco-free policy as it applies to the TSET grant application.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the City of Alva's workplace tobacco-free policy. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, number 15 is discussion and action to approve City of Alva Resolution 2023-0017, Resolution of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, Creating a Local Planning Activities Committee for the Purposes of Developing a Capital Improvement Five-Year Plan. There it is. Okay, so Joe, I think you were the only one that wasn't with us when we started this process, but we are working with the Oklahoma Economic Development Authority on a planning grant. This part of it is, I guess we're at that part in the process where we're gonna put together our LPAC, the Planning, Local Planning Committee, and, and Gail, not, not Gail, but.
Gail Thomas.
Gail Thomas will be gathering us all together to start working on this project. This is just a resolution we need to approve to go ahead and start moving to that.
We're starting really working on, to be fair, and Drake on, on making our maps of the infrastructure as it currently exists to give us somewhere to jump off.
So this is the, like, they're gonna do, track all the, the sewage lines, is that?
Basically, Drake left, but it's all, all meters, all lines, all pumps, everything. Tanks, boosters, yeah.
Very expensive. And now this, is it a requirement that all members of this committee be city council or city employees?
It's not a requirement, but when we went through this the first time, that's what the council wanted to do.
Okay, that's, that was my only concern, is I, I think it might be unofficial to have some people outside our city council on our committees.
I'd make a motion to approve City of Alva Resolution 2023-017.
Second.
And Joe, to your point, nothing precludes them from being involved. If you've got somebody, you want to see involved, let us know.
All right.
I think some of the teenagers.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Resolution 2023-017, Creating the City of Alva Local Planning Activities Committee for the Purposes of Developing Capital Improvement Five-Year Plan. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, item 16 is discussion and action to reject the bid from ETM Linings Company for the restoration of the Homestead Pond. So previously, council had directed, this was prior to hiring Steve, that council directed, meaning staff, to advertise for quotes, bids to, to, we got estimates, we don't really have bids, but we got one estimate for $17,585 to put the liner at the homestead for the pond.
At the special meeting in June, I believe it was, council elected not to accept this and asked me to go back out and see if we could find, because this is the only bid we got. So we, they asked, asked me to go out and see if we had like A to Z or any of those local.
Okay, I missed that.
That wanted to be, yeah, you weren't there, that wanted to bid on it, but hadn't, because I missed the deadline. So I went back out and got, we got one response from level estimation at about $3,000 cheaper than this. But in order to reopen the bidding process, we need to reject this bid so I can go back out and reopen the bid process again and get at least level, maybe A to Z or anybody else local, but wants to bid on it, get them involved, and we'll make sure we advertise it a lot better for our local contractor.
To be clear, this is not a project that would require a bid. We're, anytime we purchase, make a purchase, we're required to get as many quotes as, no, not less than three, if we can get three quotes. But this does not exceed the, even the previous number that was allowable for having to competitively bid. I, I don't, I mean, I think it's more money than we should spend. I think the rejecting of this bid comes because the council asked us to seek bids. So if we're gonna be asked to seek bids, then the council needs to reject the bid. So that's what this item is.
I'd make a motion to reject the bid from ETM Linings Company.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, and I'm gonna give the second to Dr. Lard to reject the bid from ETM Linings Company for the Homestead Pond. Is there any further discussion?
One thing Taylor had brought up on that is, he felt that we didn't, he didn't want to do this project until the, there's an agreement with the homestead that will be coming up soon. So he said, I'm not real familiar with that, but is that?
It's not, I mean, it's not relevant to the conversation. I mean, there is an agreement with the homestead.
Well, and that's, we were, we were, the question that a few of us on council had is, was it, do we want to spend this mu, that, any amount of money, large amount of money out there too, on something that doesn't affect the majority of the citizens? And whose responsibility that was, and that was the, the, something that Taylor had brought up. Like, so I'm not real familiar with that, but he, I mean, I didn't know if that's, that's something that was discussed at that last meeting, too, so. Is that?
Are you asking me about something that happened at that meeting? Because I wasn't.
No, I'm asking when it, do we, do you have a timeline when that agreement is?
That agreement is in negotiations right now, and they're, I mean, you haven't made any, there's, there's not been any progress.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was asking.
But this, this is our responsibility. I've got a list of who's responsible for what according to our current agreement, and according to our current, this.
The current agreement remains in effect until, as long as negotiations are ongoing, the current agreement remains in effect until a new agreement is negotiated.
Okay.
I have a motion from, again, I've got a motion, no further discussion. Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
All right, item 17, discussion and action to approve the proposed changes to the City of Alva Employee Handbook and to authorize the city business manager to fully implement changes.
Go for it, Steve. All right, so I think everybody got a copy of this. I'm assuming you had a chance to read it. Let's start off, are there any questions, any comments, any recommendations? Anything you didn't like? You know, the mayor found my typo. They didn't, they're watching.
I'll show you those later.
I haven't had a chance to let Bill Gates go through and spell check for me yet, so. I highlighted color everything in different colors, I've redesigned what's, the red underlined, so I know what to spell.
Are we gonna add the information from the tobacco policy into here?
So I did that. I put, for more information, please refer to the City's Tobacco-Free and Healthy Workplace Policies. That way. Yeah, that way I just add more pages to it, just point to those policies and make them reference them.
I did have a question, aren't we automatic, or do we still pay some paper payroll checks?
That's, that's another good one. I, we're automatic, which is why I highlighted that, because that means that this, that what's in there is antiquated.
Okay.
So I think today, I don't know that we want to approve something that's not a, you know, all drafts or all the changes, you know, included in the final document. But I do want, you know, if there's discussion about these proposed changes to the handbook, that we have that discussion tonight, so that next meeting we come back and we approve the handbook.
So one thing I wanted to bring up that I know is gonna be touchy, and Bear and I talked about it, it's on page 13, under the nepotism clause. I added in a, a E-bullet that said, basically says that anybody that's a me, a fellow member of the mayor, a member of the city council, or me, cannot be employed by the city. So, which I think is, in most cases, in most cases, okay. I think when you start talking about things like seasonal or part-time employment, I think that becomes different. And a prime example would be, you know, my daughter's going to open a state, decides to get her lifeguard certificate while she's there. She comes back here, a brand new pool opens, we can't find any lifeguards in Alva. She's certified and qualified, but we can't hire her because of this nepotism clause.
I don't like that clause. I think, I think, I mean, to me, it makes sense for, for you, because you're, they're your direct report or indirect report.
Sure.
We don't hold any form of power over an employee. Maybe an implied, you know, so they'll, they'll feel that way. But the reality of it is, is with employees, it, it ends with you for basically all positions. I think there's some exceptions in our ordinances.
Well, and try to combat that a little bit, I put this sentence here that says, for this to be enacted, there must be at least one hiring supervisor between the employee and the mayor, and a member of the city council or the business manager. That way, they're not a direct, a direct report, yeah. And, you know, ultimately the buck stops here, but with that direct hiring supervisor between us, you know, that means I'm not the one doing the hiring and firing, that direct supervisor is.
Well, with your daughter example, Courtney would be.
Right, well, actually, if you have a core manager, then Courtney, then, so. So there's levels in between there, I just, you know, the same thing, you know. If Kay went and go out and moan for Courtney, you know, he can't record it this way.
Yeah.
I just, we're such a small community to exempt that many potential people. I mean, it, it could, it could really.
It could hurt somebody needing a job.
Well, I said, I think we're gonna.
I actively have family members employed by the city. So, I mean, I don't know what you would classify as direct. I mean, it's not within my familial household, but, yeah.
It's, it defines, I, I think I would change the language. I, I agree with making that provision, but I would, I'd say change it to any municipally-elected official. And including, I mean, you're not elected, but I would include the business manager. But instead of, because then you've got treasurer, you've got clerk, you've got marshal, you've got all that is taken care of under municipally-elected official. But then I would get with OML, just make sure, make sure we can do that.
Okay.
You know, I, I know Courtney has, it's, it's been mostly Courtney that I've heard that particular item being an issue, and it's, it's been, I mean, I can't even have these, you know, high school athletes that, that want to work come work for me because their mom's on council, or their dad's on council, or whatever. And, you know, I frankly like that we can get a high school kid and put him to work out at the rec park, coaching a team, or refing a ballgame, you know, something like that.
I'll turn, I'll run it by OML, make sure that the language is okay, so.
Anything else?
On that one, no. The only other, you know, I talked about this, we need to come up with some wording for this about the, because this confused me, and it still kind of does, where it says, "An employee may be a candidate for elective or public office that shall not hold any public, or elected or public office in the United States government, state of Oklahoma, or any other state or municipality, nor is accepted." So it sounds to me like you can run for office, but if you get elected, you can't work anymore. So.
So state, state statute allows that if you are employed by the governmental entity at the time that you declare for and run for office, that you do not have to vacate, resign your position, because it is, it is understood that if you elect this person, you're electing somebody that is an employee. And however, to turn that the other way, if you are elected, you cannot be hired. That, you know, unless you resign your elected position. So I think, again, that's one, get the language from OML.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like you just need reworded.
Yeah, and I agree.
It's just confusing, but it is what, that is what that is saying.
Yeah, it is. And we could just say, we'll adhere to the state statute, unless, unless we want to be more, more stringent.
I mean, you're pointing at the state. All right, trying to drag this out. A lot of this stuff, like you said, is pretty, pretty straightforward. So the vacation time, I know this came up during Mr. Winters' favorite time of the year, which is negotiations with the IAFF. But, so I changed our, took our vacation time to match what we did for those guys, which is, instead of going to the fifth, first to the ninth anniversary, it's first to fifth, and then sixth to ninth, 10th to 19th, and 20th on. So there's 10 days, 12 days, 15 days, and 20 days.[1748.24]
I didn't have any problem with that.
That's what we did for the, for the firefighters. I know part of the conversation we did that for the firefighters, the discussion was, that I make those same changes.
Well, and that makes just more sense.
Employee handbook.
Takes better care of employees' time.
Yep. And I think the last big one I had, listen, I'm going to tell me, was the, what do you call it? The travel and entertainment stuff. As you can probably see in there, trying to kind of bring us into, not necessarily the same standard, but kind of bring us along the lines of what the federal government does. Instead of saying, okay, you know, we're only give you X number of dollars per meal, which right now the dollars, twelve dollars per meal, which you can't even get a happy meal for twelve bucks. We're gonna base our travel based off of the gsa.gov per diem rates from government. So if, for example, we come to the city, it says very clearly it's sixty-four bucks a day for meals and incidentals. Now, if you go to the, to the website, and part of our deal with our request is to print off the, the per diem site where they're going, that tells us how much the government hotels, hotel rooms are, and breaks it down for you what meals was. It's like if the EMS guys go to the city on a transfer run, and they have lunch there, well, they go to that website, and you say, okay, well, I'm, well, fourteen dollars for lunch. And so that's what we do. Otherwise, if you're gonna be there for multiple days, it's sixty-four bucks a day. I don't care what you do with it. Go, go to Chuck E. Cheese and go nuts, you know. Just understand that you're gonna be, you know, cheese crackers for the rest of the time you're there. But, once again, and it makes a lot less paperwork and stuff for her, right? It's a simple, hey, here's my, here's my form, here's how much I'm supposed to get, and that's pretty simple. So like I said, it's online, but they have to print that off, so we can look what the per diem rate's gonna be. So, I said, just makes it easier.
Same for mileage?
Yeah, mileage, matter of fact, see, there's a, we're lodging tourism, she's blah blah, but the federal, oh, put it here somewhere. Put the IRS website here.
It's currently point six five five.
Yeah, so you go to the IRS website and see what the IRS says it is. So, but I put that website here as well, so you know where to go, find their mileage rate. Yeah, it's up here, it's, yeah, right there, in section E, is the IRS. Ready to?
Just make sure in the office, whoever's processing that, if there's multiple people processing that, and they're all processing it with the same interpretation.
Sure. I think most of them, those who done it, there are some.
You'll also want to check it, cause like last year they changed it, not just on, in January, but they ended up changing it halfway through the year.
So, and then I think those are really big ones, that, some of the stuff back here, I know, like, I added a incentive pay, I had one for the doctorate, since that hadn't been a concern before, but now I've got a PhD being reimbursed for a master's degree, instead of a PhD.
How are those numbers set? Is that through?
I couldn't tell you. The numbers are in there.
On the degrees?
I kind of looked at what the square, spread was, and just carried that same formula forward from the doctorate.
They were set a long time ago.
I don't know how they were originally.
It was probably arbitrary.
Yeah, it probably was. I mean.
But.
Yeah, they were, I mean, yeah, those, they were set before I. So I wouldn't have paid any attention.
Yeah. So I added the doctorate and everything. Like I said, we hadn't had that problem before, now we do. And then back here on the door, so we've got passenger school bus, which doesn't mean anything to us, they're set at zero, so wait and have them in there, so. Here are those. Then just some changes back here for, for what's in my contract. And then, the hamburger seat acknowledgement, and then our two new travel voucher forms, so. That's pretty much it.
So.
Approval, I'll make these changes and bring it back to council.
So, um, let's, I, I entertain a motion to table until the next meeting.
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winter and a second from Mrs. Bear to table action regarding the changes to the City of Alva employee handbook. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lart?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item eighteen, is discussion in action to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero one, an amendment to City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Article Five, Hotel Tax Sections twenty dash one four six through twenty dash one six four, by revoking said sections in their entirety and replacing those sections with the immediate ordinance, permitting the Oklahoma Tax Commission to collect hotel taxes for the City of Alva. So this, this has been something that staff has been assigned through, and has been dropped multiple times through transition of staff. But the Hotel Motel Tax Tourism Committee would like for the State of Oklahoma to collect these hotel taxes for a couple of reasons. One is to ensure that, that all parties who are required to remit hotel or lodging tax do so. We don't know if we have all the Airbnbs or the Verbos or any of that stuff, that, we don't know that, but they, when they register with the State of Oklahoma, then they have to, they have some accountability there. And the other thing is, we feel like with these changes to ordinance, then we will have more consistent, regular payment of the lodging taxes. So where some, some of our local lodging establishments might not pay, but once every, you know, six months, the, the, by going to this ordinance, everybody will pay at the same frequency and hopefully consistency too.
Yeah. A couple of things in this. One thing, this does, the OTC is gonna charge us a fee of five percent, which, of whatever's collected, which we feel like is, is well within what we're missing right now. It's not being collected, it's not being remitted. The other piece of this is, while this does include Verbo, or Airbnbs and all kinds of stuff, Verbos and everything, it excludes trailer parks, I'm sorry, RB parks, right? So which, there's not that many RB parks in the city, so we're not missing out on nearly as much there as would be if we didn't have the Airbnbs and the Verbos and everything else, so. So in, in my mind, that's kind of a wash. I think the most important thing is, like the mayor said, is, OTC's gonna come down to these people, the fine-tooth comb, make sure that, that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and everything's remitted according to state law.
Whenever you, you say excludes RB parks, we weren't already getting RB parks, were we?
Shouldn't have, but we weren't. We shouldn't have gotten, uh, hotel tax from RB parks.
Well, according to our ordinance?
Well, according to OTC.
Okay. Not according to our ordinance?
Yeah, maybe not according to our ordinance.
And, and this ordinance here, I feel like it has highlighted except meeting rooms. Is that something that was added?
So, anything on there that's yellow, were recommendations, or actually, there were directives from OTC that if we wanted them to collect our taxes, this wording had to be here. So everything here in yellow and everything that's stricken out are all changes made by OTC to meet their standards of what they need.
So, the only thing that I was concerned on, and this might just be our ordinance, and I don't know how difficult this is to change, but the hotel means any building, structure, trailer, or other facility which public may, or three or more room, oh, this is it, which three or more rooms are used for the accommodation of guests. So, an Airbnb would not be considered if.
So, let me say, that should be struck, should be stricken through.
Where do you have, Joe?
The top, let's see, page one.
Paragraph.
The hotel means is the first, because I, I think we need to make sure that, this states that we're getting that, it's Airbnb, it's just, it's page one, it's like.
Yeah, that's right. It's the very first paragraph. And it says, in which three or more rooms are used for the accommodation of guests.
I thought that was.
Well, if it was a two-bedroom building, then no, it wouldn't. But if it's a three-bedroom, not two-bedroom, if it's a two-room building, then yes. Even a studio apartment is two rooms.
It goes on to say.
It does not say bedroom. It says rooms used to accommodate guests.
And it says whether such rooms are in one or several structures.
If, if it could be removed, I think it would be beneficial. These, someone with an Airbnb easily comes, they will.
And they're all.
Some Airbnb, some Verbos may be a one-bedroom cabin.
Exactly.
So, I'm, I'm almost puzzled. Do I have to go back and look at my emails from that guy?
But don't they also?
It's going to have to have a bathroom.
Or the sleeping quarters. But they don't necessarily have doors.
There, to my knowledge, there is one Airbnb that's in Alva that's true, that is set up as like an efficiency apartment.
Yeah, let me look. Let me, I've got it on computer. Actually, I'm almost puzzled that it was struck through.
Okay.
Because, because of that exact thing right there.
You got the, it's the, you got the house over here north of the funeral home.
Yeah, and that one's got, I mean, it's, so as long as it means three, three rooms, not three separate units, that's.
Yeah, so I, I know that was struck through, because, because of that exact argument, because I had the conversation with Mr. Francis from OTC.
And then you were talking about RB parks, is there a way to collect on, I mean?
What do you mean, if we do this, we can't.
Oh, they won't.
If we do this, they won't. That doesn't mean we still could.
That's true, true.
We would just have to do that. They will not.
Does our ordinance allow that?
I don't think it does.
Okay, so.
I need to change your.
We have to do that.
Where it says apartments not occupied and then it says by permanent residence is marked out, but why is not occupied marked out as well?
Yeah, because, so we had that conversation with Mr. Francis as well, because this, and it kind of comes back to, there should be a, a thing here about thirty days, or maybe there's not, but.
No, that, it's down there.
You say on page two.
Yeah, so, so for this thirty, thirty days thing here, if it's occupied, if it's not occupied by a permanent resident for more than thirty days, if, if this wasn't here, then this wouldn't count when you go collect taxes on it. But by taking that out, that means no matter how long that person's staying in that extended stay apartment complex or whatever it is, they're gonna pay hotel tax on it.
Okay, so if it's not occupied, should also be marked out, right?
So I'm confused. So, here it says, so, it says that the permanent residence as defined, if they're there for thirty days, they don't have to pay, or they do?
No, they, they do have to pay.
So what does that do for a rental?
So, a rental has a lease, and I asked that question. If there's a lease, they're a permanent resident. If it's a, let's say, you had an apartment building, you just wanted to rent to, to oilfield guys that may be there for two, three, four, five, six weeks. Because you have a lease, because it's a week-to-week rent, or whatever it is, they're not just a permanent residence, and they pay hotel tax on that.
Well, that, I mean, so my understanding of the Oklahoma Landlord and Tenant Act is that theoretically, that applies to a hotel. And so, in that situation, because that law applies, so I can rent out a property to somebody without a lease, and in the absence of a lease, the Oklahoma Landlord and Tenant Act supplies a lease. So there is a lease, always.
Right.
And that applies to hotels. That's, that's the issue you run into with squatters in hotels, is that that law applies.
This, these are all, all recommendations made by him to make sure that he can still collect tax on things like that, but that, that may be where it comes in weird.
It concerns, I don't, I don't want to end up having to, like, you know, I've got a, a rental, I want to, okay, well, now I gotta go remit my.
Yeah, right.
Hotel tax on my rental.
Man, I love this, this applies to us.
I mean, I, I'm not saying anyone would come after me for that, or anyone.
But it's just being.
Exactly, and I mean, my family's, also, also, and I'm gonna abstain from the vote, just because my family's in the motel business, but from our, I would say ninety percent of our business right now, since the decline in the oilfield, is monthly rent, so. But there is a, a signed document that is a lease, so that's where, where it comes in. Was the structure built as a motel? Yes, but.
And I think that's what the difference is.
It's, it is being used as an apartment complex, with some rooms that are rented nightly, and we do pay our, our, the motel hotel tax on anything that's nightly, but if someone's there for six months and they have that, that signed lease, then, then, I mean, we don't, even sales taxes don't collect on that, because it's no different than an apartment, so. I, from, coming from the motel background, I do have some concern there, because if it's gonna, we're gonna have to start charging someone who's staying in our, you know, apartment rooms for six months, that tax, I don't think that's really right, because it's, just because we do have rooms there that are rented as motel, we also have rooms that could be used as apartments, so. That's a concern of mine, definitely.
I think the definition, I, I'd be curious, the state's definition of what does and doesn't apply, because they, that sound, they, they made it muddy.
Because, I mean, but I think, and that's what I, I looked at this, my understanding is we are safe under the.
I don't have that.
That we are, that, 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 on page two, A is, I mean, it still says that permanent residence is defined in this article, so on this form, I mean, it's, and it says thirty days here, so I mean, as long as they're there thirty days and it's permanent resident, looking at page two, then they won't have to pay that, correct?
Before we vote on this, can we just get some more clarification on the wording from the state? Cause I know this, this ordinance would benefit the tourism committee, and I do think it's important, but we need to make sure that we're not trying to make it more complicated than what it needs to be, because I don't feel like we need to be checking apartments that may be doing a thirty-day, you know, this is strictly for hotels, motels, Airbnbs, not, but.
In my thought, if it's, if it's rented for at least thirty days, then it's, it's permanent residency. If it's less than thirty days, then it is not permanent residency.
And that's how it's been since day one of this, and that's, so, I mean.
And that is logical to me.
Yeah.
Cause that excludes your, your rental homes, because nobody's gonna lease it, I mean, if you're leasing it for less than thirty days, then I guess you're basically Airbnb, and so you're gonna be paying your taxes on it.
So.
But traditionally, yes.
I can try to get a, a Mr. Francis to, and then else maybe dial in.
Yeah.
For the next meeting, kind of have questions, he can do a small presentation on this or something.
And if there's a way that, whether it's through, I mean, I know that the, the revenues that the tourism has is, I mean, there's a, they do a lot of great things. If there's a way to get the tax from an RB park, I don't know what we need to do, but I'm all for that. If that can be done, I mean, is, I mean, that's, that's really not a whole lot different than someone saying, I'm a hotel.
I think it would be the same way with the hotel. They would just have to get with, and get the reports of how many, and would, you know, what I mean.
We would have to pass it, we would have to maintain it. We would have to be the ones to go and collect and remit it.
Oh, yeah, because they don't collect that, that's right.
Would that have to go to the vote of the people to do something like that? Might be, I mean, because I know this one, this originally.
Even if it's adding a tax.
It might.
It's adding a tax. I think it would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's not, I don't have.
We need a group.
Yeah, we would have to double check.
Might be something that we could look into. I don't know, if, why we're looking at this.
There's, and there's nothing, if, if we're okay with the state's recommended, recommended language for just the moving forward with the OTC collecting on behalf, there's nothing that prohibits us from making that change and then coming back later after we've done more research regarding RB parks.
But I'm concerned this change, even if we made it, and that, I mean, I guess there's a.
No, I'm not saying do it now.
Okay, okay, because I was.
I was gonna ask for a motion to table, please.
Yeah, I, I will make a motion to table, ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero one.
Four more. All second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winter, and a second from Mrs. Bear to table ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero one. Yeah, stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lart?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. Item nineteen, discussion in action to approve City of Alva Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one eight, a resolution of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, adopting an investment policy for monies in the custody and control of the, City Treasurer authorizing the investment of funds in accordance with this policy. So. Dr. Decker, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. I'll withdraw my request. The, the investment policy, basically, we have been looking at a option that, that, I think, most people know that there are a lot of restrictions on how governmental entity can invest funds. The biggest one being is that there are really no allowances for any type of risk, so anything that we put our funds into has to, at minimum, not, not cost us any of the principal investments. So, we, you know, we use certificates of deposit on a regular basis, and we do have one, you know, bank savings account that we use right now. We were, Steve had been in communication with Frank Crawford, with Crawford and Associates, discussing options for some of the monies that we had in CDs for the Turf and Phil project, that's a recreation complex, and made Steve aware of this Raymond James savings account, which has a greater than five percent, you know, interest rate, two-day liquidity, and it's insured up to, you know, fifty million dollars. And so the CDs that we've had, you know, here lately, we have some that are making that interest rate plus some. But we don't have CDs that, that are penalty free without, for, for an early withdrawal. And so we're going to, in order to, to move forward with, with getting this, this account, this resolution, right?
Yep.
This resolution allows the treasurer to go ahead and set up this type of savings account. And, and if we do that, basically, what we would be doing is where we presently have a pooled cash account, that's basically our checking account, and we write our checks and do all our business out of it. We would also have a pooled investment account. And so we could, you know, using our same accounting practices, account for the different parts of our, our cash that we, we don't need to have readily available, but we need it to be more available than a CD.
Does this, I mean, looking at, so we're still going to, to stay with the CDs if, if it's not something we're gonna, I mean, it's not replacing the CDs, it's just.
So there are some things that we don't, I mean, we, we don't anticipate having a need for. But there are other things that we can't necessarily always predict when we're gonna have the need for. And there are some other things that we absolutely know when we're gonna have the need for it, and it doesn't fit within the, you know, the generally accepted three-month minimum on a, on a CD. The turf infills is one of those things. We've got, you know, greater than half a million dollars that's growing, you know, five percent interest. But we're probably gonna need to spend that within three months.
At least some of it.
At least some of it. And then there's also things like our stability funds, our stabilization funds, that we don't know when we're gonna need those. I mean, that's, you know, in case, you know, extraordinary events happen, the stability funds are there to allow us to, to continue operations. So that, that's basically what, what this savings account allows us.
Now, currently, are we bank, this, this, we bank currently with mostly local banks? Is that where a lot of our money is held currently?
One hundred percent.
Okay, so, and this isn't a local bank, correct?
This is not a local.
Okay, that's my only, and I don't know if they have anything even comparable, if it's, I'm sure, I mean, that's my only concern is, you know, whenever we're banking with the local banks that are supporting our community and helping our economy grow, I think that is something that's very important. I mean, that we look at and consider.
The thing we talked about, the finance, maybe a lot of local banks won't match that five percent on their, on their money market accounts.
Okay.
So, you know, you might get like a one or two percent on that, but you're not gonna probably get the five percent.
Okay.
Is there something we don't know? Okay.
The one thing we didn't do is, is check with the local banks to see if there was a rate that was comparable.
We can.
I'm sorry, I would say at least check, and if they say no, worst case, is we go back to the five percent.
I agree.
Well, we don't have to, just because it passes, doesn't have to open that, that savings account, right?
And, and let's be clear, what we're passing is the resolution that allows us to.
Open the accounting.
Open the investment.
It doesn't specify where we're gonna go.
That we have to go.
I don't believe, does it?
Yeah.
I didn't think that the resolution specified, but I could be wrong.
Now, it says, so like, number six, number, number six, the general operating bank of the City of Alva should be Bank Central of Alva. Nothing herein shall be construed as limiting the city's right to open accounts at other state or national banks located in the City of Alva, Oklahoma, or early regulated financial institution purposed in the implementing this investment policy. So it's.
It does not specify.
It doesn't specify, frankly, it says we can, at a, at an institution of our choosing.
Yeah, okay. So I would motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
Second.
I was gonna say, I would say we should talk to the local banks or.
Yes.
I'll, I'll give it a try to have him. All right. We have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Resolution adopting an investment policy for monies in the custody and control of the City of Alva. City treasurer authorizing investment of funds in accordance with the policy. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Okay. Item twenty, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Y'all have been triggers. Twenty-one is new business. We don't have anything that meets the definition of new business. Twenty-two, remarks and inquiries by council members.
Shout out to the creature concerns and the, the animal control. Last I checked, I think all the animals and the pound have been adopted, so those, that, they've been there for a long time, and that's definitely a great thing. Shout out to them.
Rocky was adopted this afternoon.
Yeah, I saw it.
Anything else? All right, so the council's adjourned. Move on to the, take a, a break before we start the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Development meeting first, then. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lark?
Here.
Dally?
Swallow? Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks? Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
All right. Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at ADA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And item B, approval of claims, the amount of one million, two hundred seven thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-nine cents, and payroll expenses of four hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and five cents. I will say, the one million number there, that is because we, we bought the CD with a million dollars. It came from the share trust for the pool. It is not, it is never.
It's about two, five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, but it is, that is not the normal monthly expenditures for that.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Dr. Lark, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. No new business, we're adjourned. Sorry, Gary. We'll see if he gets what he wants now.
I might just have to change my mind.
He's not here.
The other one, you're ready, will you please call the roll?
Winters?
Here.
Lark?
Here.
Dally?
Swallow? Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks? Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may, may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And item B, approval of claims, the amount of one hundred thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars, eighty-two cents, and payroll expenses of sixty thousand, seventy-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Here, yes.
Here. Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Okay, item five, discussion in action to authorize the city business manager and the mayor to purchase a mini excavator, John Deere fifty P tier compact excavator, for the state contract price of one hundred five thousand, six hundred two dollars, less any applicable discounts from Western Equipment for the City of Alva Water Department. So Drake has found the availability of a mini excavator, and he's wanted one for quite some time. Just because it makes it easier to work on the lines, particularly in, in tight spaces around town. You can generally work with the mini excavator and the, and the easement, and don't have to work in streets when we don't have water lines in the street. Not that that's everywhere, but it's, it's a, it's a useful piece of equipment, particularly for his department. We, we did rent one last fall, when we put the new six-inch line in on Mill Street. And pretty well, it, it handled all of the job with our guys operating it. And so it's a useful piece of equipment. It was not budgeted. The, the, there are some rebates, though, that come with this particular item, and that knocks the price down to about seventy thousand dollars net cost for the City of Alva. And speaking with the city manager, he talked with the water superintendent, and they've discussed ways to take other parts of the, the water budget and use it for this, if it's that important to the department. There are four hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars budgeted for personnel expenditures within the water department, based on what they, based on what they paid out in personnel wages and, and benefits in the month of July, which, as, as Mr. Ford mentioned earlier this evening, they've had several calls for water line breaks and some after-hour stuff and that kind of thing. You know, July, and then again in August, but it's, it's believed that the, what they spent in July, if that were to be carried out through the entire year, we feel like that wouldn't be a stretch. It's probably an accurate reflection of what any, you know, bad month might be. And, and, you know, obviously, it's more expenditures than what we might have on a good month. So if water department froze hiring, that would save the department one hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in this year's budget. And Drake willing to do that, it sounds like, the equipment will, will be as beneficial as another hand or more beneficial?
I don't love the idea, but I mean, if that's what it's gonna take, you know, that's just, it's one of the sacrifices we have to, to make to get that piece of equipment we needed. I mean, it's to the point now to where you can't get a backhoe and a lot more easements. And, I mean, people are very, very meticulous about their property, and they wanna see, they wanna see not as much mess. They wanna see a quicker result. I mean, just a lot easier to pass through more effective.
Well, I'll tell you, that, that breakup on patching, if Orr and those guys had come here with that Mini-X, we'd have done a lot more damage to that mini yard than we did. And that Mini-X was able to, to keep it really tight. Instead of, you know, backhoe, come here and rip out this much, the Mini-X is gonna take it so much.
You're about forty thousand dollar team around her house.
Yeah.
So what, how many people are we putting on freeze? How many positions is that?
Coming over.
Like three.
So how many do you currently have? So that's almost half there. I mean, how does this, I mean.
When was the last time you were more than four?
Yeah.
Like a year or so ago.
They've been operating this way for a while.
So, so possibly in the future, we look at lowering that number. I mean, that's, if they have, I mean, I, I can't see to see the, the, if they don't have the people buying the equipment. But if that's not, is it just because there's not qualified applicants? Is that why we're not hiring, or?
And if we do the telemetry work we talked about, that's, I mean, shoot, that's, that's almost an employee a day.
Well, that's my only concern is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to do a higher increase than tomorrow in the pool of workers we have, if we don't have the type of qualified, tomorrow a qualified person comes in, that would be a good employee. I don't wanna send them away.
I don't want it to be a hard freeze either.
I'm not, I'm not against buying the equipment, but if we have a qualified applicant, that's gonna be an asset to, to the department. I mean, I think we might.
I'd rather lease the equipment and make sure that we hire someone if we have to, or.
Now, the other thing we're not thinking about in this, and like I said, this is still kind of a stretch. You know, we're getting the new meters in. That may change our.
Our manpower needs.
Manpower needs. That will drastically, in fact, we get the new meters in, now we're not out there manually reading meters.
And, and if we do, if we do that, and we get the telemetry project done sooner than later, and, and, you know, that, that could drastically, this equipment is going to make jobs easier and more efficient, and so manpower can go down there as well. But I also don't wanna hamstring that department.
Well, I, I would hold, I mean, if it really, really comes down to, we'll figure something else out as well.
I just don't want approval of this to be seen as, the council said, there's a hard freeze on high layer.
Oh, no, I would have said, they had a qualified applicant coming, he would just have to look at it, try to figure it out.
Okay, I'm not saying we can't do that, but what I am saying is, it is not budgeted. And the only way it is budgeted is if you take that money out of personnel.
Yes.
Well, if, I, what I'm saying, if a qualified applicant walks in the door and we don't have a discussion about how else we funded that and, and budget differently, then we're doing ourselves and that department a disservice. And so it justifies the conversation, and if we're not willing to have it by approving this, then I'm not okay with that.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Because what I would say is, this is the type of purchase you make at the end of the fiscal year, not the beginning.
I would normally agree with that, yes.
Is there room here for one more employee with the one difference of the one thirty-four and the seventy thousand?
Close.
Yeah, very close, it'd be real close.
If we freeze two positions.
Yeah, we can.
And leave him, cause he said he hasn't been over four in a while, so if we leave one open and.
I, I think we can if that remaining money.
So with this, with this purchase, if we, if we do it, the water department budget does not change. It's, that budget remains the same.
Yeah.
It just says that we are acknowledging that there's gonna have to be changes in other parts of this budget in order to make this happen. And, and so I, I think that's the main thing, cause if we get going through the year, I mean, we budgeted three times as much repairs and maintenance as we budgeted in, in, in a long time. But last year made us a little bit gun shy. Now, hopefully, we don't have a last year again. But, you know, if we don't have a last year again, we've got all kinds of.
Then that'll be irrelevant at the end of the year.
There was discussion, I think it's at the budget meeting, about the cemetery possibly being able to purchase their other piece of equipment they're using. Is that still possible?
That's already, that's already done in this budget.
Okay, so it's, okay.
It's not, the money hasn't moved yet, but the budgeted revenues are already accounted for in the expenses of the water department.
So what are we replacing that piece of equipment with for the water department?
We're not gonna, we weren't going to move it unless we had.
Okay, so that, okay, so.
Sell the backhoe, we get a Mini-X essentially, was what it came up, give the cemetery our backhoe, so they had a piece of equipment up there. Us get a Mini-X, so we all have it for, I mean, cause we shared, all of us shared equipment, so it's good for, I mean, it's good for everybody.
But are we able to use that, that amount that the cemetery is paying for the backhoe, for this piece of equipment, to even lower the price from the seventy, less that?
Not unless we take something else out of their budget. Cause we already put, when we approved the budget, we approved the water department to get forty thousand dollar transfer of cash from the cemetery.
Okay, so it's already there.
And, and so it's already approved in the budget, but the expenditure on a, on that mini excavator was not in the budget.
Basically, the budget accounted for the sale of the equipment, but not the purchase to replace it. That was probably an oversight, but.
No.
What, we, we were gonna sell the equipment.
The capital equipment was on the list, but we were way over budget.
Right, well, so you probably, probably shouldn't have budgeted the sale of the equipment, but we didn't have.
Well, we, we won't move the equipment without.
Right, but it, it's, it's, it's irrelevant. I'd make a motion to authorize city business manager and the mayor to purchase a mini excavator for the state contract price of one hundred and five thousand, six hundred and two, less any applicable discounts from Western Equipment for the City of Alva Water Department.
Second. Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Dr. Lark, to authorize the manager and the mayor to, or the mayor, to purchase a mini excavator. manager and the mayor to, or the mayor, to purchase a mini excavator, at state contract pricing, one hundred five thousand, six hundred and two dollars, less any applicable discounts from Western equipment for the city of Alva Water Department. Is there any further discussion?
So if someone, if someone, I was going to say, if someone came in and applied as a qualified person, are we able to hire them or not with this?
We are, yes, at this time, yes.
Okay.
Depending on what they want to be paid, depending on, you know.
But it's not a, more a hiring freeze, it's just a matter of.
We had made a motion for a hiring freeze.
Oh, there's no hiring freeze on.
I had to make a motion for that.
No, we only made a motion, we've got, when we bring you guys something that's expensive, we need to bring you a way to pay for it.
Yes, I agree.
And, and we can't bring you something, I mean, we can't just put stuff in front of you and say, you need to do that. This is one way that I know that the money will be there in order to pay for this.
Just an option, if we just know.
There could be other options by the end of the year.
And that's why, when I said, I wanted to make it clear that if I'm supporting this, I am not supporting a hiring freeze if the right candidate came along, because that was the proposed method of paying for it. If we get the right candidate, and we need to start evaluating how else we manipulate the budget, I want to come to the table and talk about manipulating the budget.
There's enough, I've got enough room right here between the one hundred thirty-four thousand and the seventy thousand, to easily cover another employee.
Okay, easily. Everything we improve, it's all contingent upon what happens to us throughout the year. If we have a half a million dollars in water line breaks.
We're going to be in trouble.
We're going to be in trouble.
And he's going to need an excavator.
He has employees.
So.
Catch point two there.
With as much certainty as we can give, there's adequate funding there, there's sixty-four thousand dollars in excess of what we would, we would have to have.
Let's just hope this rain has helped the ground.
What I have a question on is, I want to get these guys every piece of equipment that we can get them, so they can work efficiently and safely.
Yeah.
But we also have a ton of stuff sitting around, and we're going to spend the money on this, where are we going to put it?
What's that?
This mini excavator, where are we going, you know, I've heard.
Where's it going to live?
Where's it going to live at?
That they take care of.
Or is it going to be stored, you know?
It's going to live in my building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, because we have the.
Did you hear?
It's going to put it in the building. It'll live in my building.
Okay. What, how much surplus stuff do you have living in your building?
Uh, surplus.
That you don't use, and, and, and I, we've talked about this.
I don't think he has, he's not doing a whole lot of surplus there, a few other departments have more surplus than he does, especially once we get the mini X, he sells us backhoe to the cemetery, then he doesn't have a lot of surplus.
I mean, that's true direction, I want to go, I want to get what these guys need, but we need to start getting rid of some of this stuff I see sitting on the fence.
There is other departments that have a lot of it that are out of, outside their buildings and.
It has been a while since we've had, you know, we usually, once a year, we used to have a mass surplus agenda item that was, I don't know, like, twelve items, and we haven't done that in several years, so.
Next task, Steve.
You want some mass surplus.
Mass surplus, okay.
We, usually, once a year, we did that.
We're going to call, we're going to call it the.
So you keep all your.
We call ours.
It's, sometimes it was, there would be eight bin numbers listed of different trucks.
I don't know that we have that.
I don't, we've got two that the county wants, we got surplus on program since September, so the county wants them.
And I mean, if you look outside at the street department, just drive by there, there's stuff that's been in that same spot probably for ten years, I mean, and I know, we may use it someday, I don't know if that's their philosophy, but if they can't go out and get it running, I mean, if it's something that's, you know, in rough shape, that's never going to be used, let's get it pulled off.